The Meetings Act is posted on the door back there. If you're gonna read that. Uh, roll call. Mr. Thor.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Uh, Chance.
Yeah.
Tim.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Myself here. I'm all kind of cool. Um, we're gonna skip right to... What number is it?
Seven.
Seven.
Number seven. Student presentation. You guys can do your thing.
All right. Well, first I would like to thank all of you for allowing us to come in here just for you to hear about our music program and what we're doing in our music classroom and to listen to these young second grade musicians perform for you tonight. And I also want to thank you for supporting our music program here at Plainview Public Schools. These instruments have been a valuable addition to our music classroom. We've used them daily since they have arrived. And if you were to walk into our room right now, you would see them sitting out, ready to be used. So, they were purchased through a grant program called Donors Choose, where donors can donate to a public school classroom project that's set up by the teacher. And on December 1st, all of the donations were matched. And our community donated over $3,000 to fund our project. And then, five hours, our $6,898 project was fully funded, and we were able to purchase 11 of these instruments that you see sitting in front of you. And I just want to say thank you to Plainview community for showing your support for our music program as well. So, the two larger instruments that you see here were purchased by the district. And with that purchase, we received one free alto xylophone, which is this size of one. And the addition of those two larger instruments completed our sound for our ensemble. So, those provide the low voice or the bass voice to the full barred instrument ensemble. So, with the addition of the 11 plus the three, we went from nine instruments to 23. So, now, we have enough for every student to have an instrument to play when they're in class.
Um, I don't get to teach these little guys. I've got the third, fourth, fifth, and sixth. But I also want to thank the community for their generous donation for this. This was just amazing. The support of the school, the administration, the school board. It's great. And Katie for getting the ball rolling. I never would've thought of something like this. In my previous teaching, um, we... I used game plan, and I loved it. And I thought I was giving the kids this really great music foundation for high school choir, high school band. I'm like, "Oh, it's just great." I didn't know what I was missing, and it was this. And so, when I came to Plainview and I heard we were getting the game plan curriculum, which I also thank you for giving, because I love it. And then, purchasing this, um, I feel like this was the icing on the cake that put it all together. Using our new curriculum and this, we're able to provide the best musical experience for these kids. I really feel that in all my teaching.
I'm back in sixth, Serena.
Katie's been really great about walking me through this ORF stuff. This is kind of new to me, because I did not have these barred instruments where I was before. I think I had four of them, and that didn't work, so I didn't use them. She's been really great about doing that. And the thing I'm learning from her is that using these almost every day, you can engage every student at the same time. Everybody's got mallets in their hands, and they're using creative thinking. You're gonna watch the coordination from these kids. It's amazing. They're playing, they're singing, they're cooperating. There's a lot of things going on in one lesson, and this... You'll see it. It is amazing. If these guys can do it, you can do it. Jump in. Using this process, I love watching the kids, because they are so focused and they are so engaged. I get a kick out of it, because I don't think they know they're learning. I really don't. They're just... It's fun for them, and so that makes it fun for us. It means it's easy for us to get concepts across to them. I've taught many years, and I really feel like this is the first year I'm really teaching a well-rounded curriculum by using the game plan and this. Plainview's kids, they are so fortunate to have this opportunity. I don't know of any school in northeast Nebraska that has provided this for this ensemble, this many instruments, and I've been in a few schools. And I wouldn't even say across the state of Nebraska. You're not gonna see this. So, you guys have provided something really, really great for these kids. So, you guys need to pat yourselves on the back for allowing this to happen, for Katie to get this going, Katie to the community. You need a pat on the back, or pat yourself. You've provided just something really great for these kids, and I can't thank you enough. So, thank you.
So, Carl Orth once stated about elemental music. It is that it is music that makes oneself, in which one takes part not as a listener, but as a participant. These instruments allow our students to be active participants in the music-making process. So, what you will see tonight as they're performing is students performing on ORF instruments. The ORF showwork approach to music, to teaching elemental music, was developed by Carl Orth and Ganiel Keatman to build musicianship through the integration of music, movement, speech, and drama, all of which you will see in their performance tonight. There will be music elements of steady beat, eighth notes, quarter notes, and syncopation. You will also see in this performance how skills that go beyond the music classroom, such as focus, teamwork, collaboration, problem-solving, creativity, and more, are being developed through the ORF approach. Most importantly, I hope that you will recognize the impact that this approach and the impact of this approach and the ability to perform on these instruments will have in our music program long-term. These... If these second graders continue through this approach until sixth grade, not only will they gain an appreciation for music, but they will also have all of the foundational knowledge that they need to continue making music in choir and in band for the rest of their time at Plainview. So, do any of you have any questions? All right. And students, will you please introduce yourselves to our board members, starting with Tristan?
Hi, my name is Tristan, and I am playing, uh, Metalophon.
Hi, my name is Evan, I'm playing, uh... Hi, I'm playing the saxophone.
Hi, my name is Kayla, and I'm playing the Metalophon.
Hi, my name is Alina, and I'm playing the xylophone.
Hi, my name is Colvin, I'm playing the Metalophon.
Hi, my name is Luna, I'm playing the saxophone.
Hi, my name is Bradley, I'm playing the glutton's shield.
Uh, my name is Kendra, and I'm playing the glutton's shield.
All right. I hope you enjoy our performance of the folk song, Captain Don't Side-Track. You're trained. Fincham? Rappel. Ready? One, two, three. Captain don't side track your train. Captain don't side track your train. Number three and nine coming in on time. Captain don't side track your train. Engine, engine, number nine coming down Chicago line. If the train just runs the tracks, will I get my money back? Captain don't side track your train. Captain don't side track your train. Number three and nine coming in on time. Captain don't side track your train. Engine, engine, number nine coming down Chicago line. If the train just runs the tracks, will I get my money back? Captain don't side track your train. Captain don't side track your train. Number three and nine coming in on time. Captain don't side track your train.
Thank you guys very much for coming in. That was awesome.
Amazing.
Can't wait to see what you're gonna do down the road in the next ten years.
Absolutely.
I'm sure it'll be wonderful. Keep it up.
Thank you.
So, those instruments make that noise with help of you and plugs you.
Yes, they do. We'll leave them in here so you can play them when you're done.
All right. Thanks, guys.
They might not be all piece anymore.
I put the gap right here. Gap right here now, let's get our candles.
Thanks for coming in, Deb.
Yep, thanks.
Pretty awesome, what you entertain like that.
Next month, can the teachers do it for us?
Yes.
And the administrators? Look, they're ready to go.
You were a teacher for a few years. You know how much they love to come to board meetings and make presentations.
Love it. Love it. I bet Ms. Swaps could do it tonight.
Yep, she could go right now.
My eyes closed.
I knew it.
If you could play really soft, you can play while we have our meetings.
So, do I ask?
You have not known Katie very well. You asked her to play soft.
All right. On to number six, the consent agenda. Start out with the agenda. If we need to make any changes with that, does anyone have anything to change? Otherwise, we'll move on to minutes from last month. Somebody has anything with the minutes. We'll go on to the financials. Easy crowd today.
I'm just curious. What is Pedals and Pasts Trees?
That is the, um, sixth grade fundraiser.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. Thank you. Didn't know they had a name.
We'll be waiting on a federal reimbursement again for that lunch fund. So, you know, a couple months back, we moved 20,000 over, and then moved it back last month. We may need to do that again, um, probably this month if we don't get...
We'll be that match. We're sitting on eight grand. If I could talk a cook or two to not get paid, you know, for the month.
So, if she's not successful at that...
If you can do that, we might give you a little.
Yeah. Maybe under 10 grand.
So, is, you know, Kelly authorized to move that as necessary, you know, to cover that expense until that federal reimbursement comes? Because we know that's coming, and we know it will more than make a solvent. But they just, you know, they can't reimburse on a monthly basis to, you know, all the schools across the country right now.
We're looking at about 39.8 right now for the last month.
No, that's all. We're expecting almost 40 grand.
That's coming in.
We still got... Yes, but we still gotta pay bills, and that might take us into the red if that... If they are delayed longer than anticipated.
So, we're gonna have to pay them one way or the other, I'm sure. Whether we get reimbursed or not, while they're not gonna write it off. If they have a problem with some transfer in that.
Not much of a choice.
It'll be on... It'll be on financials in a month. So, you'll know exactly when it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, there's nothing else on that. Move on to the claims. So, the first two entries here are both on the last government money we got paid. We're not waiting on the next one to pay. Correct.
That is... That will be future CARES money.
This is future?
Yes.
I got the air purifier we were paying for with the last...
We did. But I can submit that now for reimbursement. We didn't know at the time that we had a CARES 2.0, if we can call it that, and that it would kind of broaden the, uh, the list of eligible expenses. So, those things can be paid for, can be reimbursed with CARES money. When I write that grant here coming up pretty soon, you submit the grant application.
That's separate from the Esser funds that you're gonna talk about?
Same thing.
That is the same?
Yes.
Okay.
You think people kind of know CARES is a more common term. It's a broader term.
When we get into Tristan's report, you're gonna have a little bit on the headphones.
Sure, I can.
Okay, how they're working and what you're using for and stuff. So, the Chromebooks was more than what... Do you remember what the original price was supposed to be?
Yeah, they were... They... We had to, uh, pay about $20 more per device from the time we submitted it until they were able to actually fill the order.
Is that because they were a different model that we got?
No. Got the same... Got the same model. It's just, uh, because of...
Supply and demand.
Yeah. The demand of them, which obviously took us a couple months extra to get those in, but, he just... He couldn't or wouldn't honor it. And it did expire. They didn't fill it. I mean, I think the bid was good for 30 days, even though we accepted it. It was about three months before they actually filled it. Uh, I want to put a face to that $21,529.62 claim. This is Cassie. She's a student who was placed in our district by HHS and completely deaf. And her IEP team determined, well, the only logical decision was that she go to Iowa School for the Deaf. And so, this is our young lady, uh, who is doing terrific. I will go visit her next week. I've never been to Iowa School for the Deaf, but if we're gonna send them $21,000 for a semester tuition payment, um, I'm gonna stop in and visit.
Where is that at in Iowa?
Council block.
Oh.
So, she lives in our district, but she's...
She boards, yes. You... At Iowa School for the Deaf, you board there, and then you go home on the weekends. So, as long as she's placed in our district, um, we're responsible for her education.
So, is that part of boarding? That's all part of it?
Yes. Yeah. So, it's not inexpensive by any means, nor should you expect it to be, I guess. But, um, I just thought it was important that you see that there's a... There's a student on the other end of that expense.
Did we get a trailer repaired? See, it charged you $48.75 to go to Nebraska.
That's a... That's a trailer. We purchased a trailer.
We purchased a trailer.
For, uh, about... Anywhere from three to eight times a year, we rent a trailer to use for one act or music.
Okay.
But we've got between one act and music, and now maybe football and art and wrestling. We need a trailer. So, uh, at Osman Northeast Trailer, they had one that was the right size. Worked with them a little bit on price, not much. But now, the school district, uh, you know, owns an enclosed 12-foot trailer that we will use for a great variety of times throughout the year.
What can you pull that with?
Uh, we can pull it with our white van. Not sure that you can have students in a vehicle when you are pulling it, but, uh, it's a two and 5/16 ball size. But it can be pulled by that white van.
The Suburbans?
Or the Suburbans. Or my pickup, which will pull it to Omaha to get our wrestling mat from the state tournament. That we purchased several months back.
Any other questions on claims? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Aye, second.
Ten seconds. So, first and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Both in carries, again. Any public comments tonight? Okay. We've got a discussion items. Number nine, review of board policy 505.01 and 505.03.
Essentially, policies that are managed by the building principals. They always have some discretion at, uh, consequences for certain behaviors, but, um, 505.01 and 505.03 provide, you know, some guidance, which is, I don't think there's... I don't have any recommendation for language changes. I don't know if either of the principals do, or if you have any questions. But they are two policies for review this month.
That bill fell through, did it on the discipline deal, like, a year ago or so.
Yeah. Yeah. Senator Verone's...
That would've probably changed something.
Restraint bill. That... Yeah. That would've had some effect on this one.
I don't think there's anything like that coming through this year.
We've got a couple policies down the road, actually, but...
Well, there's no changes. We don't have to even...
Nope.
Do that.
Nope. Yeah. Unless, you know, any questions for clarification on any of those two?
Do you have any questions on that? Okay, number 10, COVID response.
Okay, so, you know, you're certainly all aware of how, you know, things are moving in the country and in the region. We've had a couple examples in the past week or two that remind us that COVID is still real. It still exists. People still contract it, and quarantine rules still apply. So, we haven't had any changes in our practice or procedure in either building. And I guess at this point, we don't anticipate any.
Didn't our policy expire a week ago?
If this return to school plan, okay, doesn't have an expiration date on it, but it isn't really valid anymore because it applied to the Pierce County RISD dial, which doesn't exist anymore. So, this... This plan actually, you could conclude, is obsolete.
Yeah. But my point is, we made a policy, voted on it, and when we went green, we were to be maskless, which was a week ago. So, we have no policies.
Green... There is no green Pierce County RISD dial.
That means we have no policy, then?
Correct.
It's not policy.
It's not technically policy either.
It was an action item. It's not in our policy book. It was just something that we voted on.
I don't understand why we're gonna keep wearing masks, because there's three other schools that already have dropped the mandate, which...
Which three are those, Chance?
Chambers, um...
O'Neill.
O'Neill, and there's one more. I can't remember the other one off the top of my head. But I also know that Pierce Public Schools have never made it a complete mandate. They've always had it choice. And I believe we live in America, not China, if I'm not mistaken. So, I don't know why...
Well, talk... Your board made the decision.
Students to a higher standard than we hold ourselves. I, for one, never wear a goddang mask. Mike, I've seen you not wear a mask in public. I mean, it's fine, but I... And I don't... I haven't seen you guys wear them. I don't see you guys. But I just don't know why we can't just make it a choice. If kids want to wear... If the parents want their kids to wear them, wear them. If parents are fine with them not wearing them, don't wear them. Same with the teachers. If they want to wear them, wear them. If they don't, don't.
Me, I had a conversation with Jay Bellar the other day. I would really appreciate hearing what kind of perplexities that throws into your position.
NSA agreed that they're keeping everything as is for the remainder of the winter season, which means that everything's gonna stay at 50%, no matter what changes statewide for attendance rules. Masks are gonna be mandated by teams that are playing there unless you're fully participating. People on the bench still have to wear them. Coaches still have to wear them. Fans still have to wear them. So, nothing's really changing in that aspect. So, I guess in my thoughts with it, I think we've come this far. I would really hate to see some of our kids lose an opportunity because we make a change in the fact that the quarantine rules are still the same, meaning that if a kid's infected not wearing a mask, the kid wearing a mask still has to quarantine then at that point in time. So, this kid made the choice to try and protect himself, but if the one who's actually infected doesn't, it still affects everybody else the same in that they have to quarantine. And that's where Randolph got in trouble. Our girls lost the basketball game. Their girls didn't get to play in the whole conference tournament because of it. So, I look at it as, uh, we have state testing coming up in a month. Our kids, this is the most valuable time for them to be in school, because we're really pushing on some of the areas that they need help, and we need them in the building. We got a girls' basketball team that can have a winning record for the first time in a decade. We got a wrestling team that's got a chance to three-peat. We got a speech team that's been champion and runner-up in their first two competitions. So, I just don't want to rob our kids of an opportunity because of a change. I just want to see them have that chance. I'm not willing to take that chance, but again, it's not my choice. But that's my thoughts, and that's where... That's my perspective right now.
Mike, my conversation with Mr. Bellar said that as soon as indoor sports was over, they were probably gonna change the rules. Do you see that yourself?
I can see because of the outdoor, because then we're shifting to track and golf. So, that part I could see when it comes to activities outside. But what does that do for... I guess, what are you asking about us trying to...
Well, I'm trying to separate some reality from hysteria. I completely appreciate what you're saying, and I concur with what you're saying. But we have to have an end to it.
Yep.
And so, you know, my person, I would like to see the last indoor sport. That would be the end of it.
I would like to see it end now.
I know you would. So would I, you know, but...
Here's my point, though. We've already quarantined kids. They're all wearing masks, and if they're in close contact, they still have to quarantine. So, what the hell's the difference if one of them's not wearing a mask? Because we're still quarantining them.
The quarantine rules have evolved since August.
And everything has changed since they started. Everybody talks out of both sides of their mouth.
The quarantine rules have evolved since this started in August, and we've evolved and adjusted with it. The quarantine net started out was pretty big, and it captured kids, and it was 14 days, and that's the way it was. And now, it's, you know, a kid can test out after seven or 10 days with no symptoms. And so, the quarantine still exists. So, if we were to go maskless in school, we would have to... And we had a student with symptoms or tested positive, or any individual, we would have to contact trace, and those kids would be identified, and they would have to quarantine for seven days. Now, if that happened right before district track or district golf or district speech or state speech, those kids would miss an opportunity. They'd have to be quarantined. It doesn't do, it's irrelevant to discuss, well, what are the chances of that? We know they're not high, but we know that it can happen. So, even though we'd be outdoor sports and spectators would be a non-issue, wearing masks would probably be a non-issue as a spectator. The kids are still inside this building from eight to 3:30, close contact with one another. So, and as long as the existing quarantine rules are in place, we're at risk. Kids are at risk of missing school or missing extracurricular opportunities. So, I know that Jay Bellar hopes to not mandate them at NSA activities once we go outdoors. That doesn't have anything to do with what we, what you want to do during our school day. That'll only apply to spectators that go to track and golf outdoor, outdoor contests and whether kids need to wear them, you know, I mean, but it'd be, it'd be a whole different discussion, obviously, you know, for them because circumstances are quite different.
So, you mean telling me that a kid that's playing basketball, five people on the court, they're not having any close contact?
I don't make that decision, Chance. We don't make that.
It just makes no dang sense.
Well, you're talking to the wrong people, you know. We don't make the quarantine.
We don't have to make it. Like, can we, do we have to be, yeah, why, why do we have to be followers all the time?
You don't have to. You don't.
We don't have to be, but we may get shut down in our athletic events if something happens. We'll be done.
Okay, well, I guess that's the risk I'm willing to take because I don't think it's gonna happen. Pierce hasn't got shut down yet, have they? Nope.
They've had numerous wrestlers on the wrestling team maybe go quarantine. That was surely after the first year.
And they get shut down in football season, though, when they really care about something.
I think connecting the dots.
Yeah.
So.
It's not that they didn't have it. It's just that they didn't.
I guess, just explain to me anyway, a little bit here. The quarantine procedures and protocols, they haven't changed from our health department, have they?
Just the length of the quarantine has changed?
The diagram that we're showing for anyway, with kids being exposed, anyway, those all say the same, correct? Staff, what were the staff's feelings about this? I mean, they're the ones that are in this environment every day. They're the ones exposing themselves and risking their health.
Hey, I think, I think every staff member, including myself, would tell you, I would love to get rid of this mask.
Yeah. Take it off.
I would love to get rid of this mask, but I wear it because our school board said, at school, we're wearing masks. So, that's why I wear it. I mean, you know, I don't know that the school board said, we'll wear them at school board meetings. In fact, I know the school board didn't say that, and so, so yes, I mean, there's nothing that says that, you know, there's no mandate to wear them, you know, after, after school hours, but but I, I, the whole staff would say, let's, it would be nice to, to get rid of these masks. But I would expect, I would, maybe Ms. Wobbs wants to speak for herself. I think we've, we've, like Mr. Schmidt said, we've come this far. And, and the kids have really done better than we would have hoped or expected, especially our little ones, where people across the country in the summertime were saying, you can't make a kindergarten wear the mask. They're probably better than any student we have at just wearing the mask.
You, you mentioned briefly about if something wasn't a policy, I missed that. Did you, did Mike make a bit of a?
Well, he said that this is policy. All I've missed policy is what's in this book. There's nothing in this book about COVID.
Then what did you know about what mask?
It was an action item.
Okay.
Okay, down here on the action items, those are temporary things. Policy goes in this book and it's for years.
Okay.
Until it's changed. Action items are short-term things that can be changed.
Okay, so, we had a date on that action item, so.
A date or a.
Supposedly when we went green, so help me understand here. I guess I'm a loss of, you know, I made the motion two weeks before school started about these masks, so I'm kind of confused. Because the dial disappeared because it went green. You know, I heard Dr. Earl saying this, but that's not what we voted on, so I'm confused as to what gives you the vote. I mean, I'm asking you to present.
Well, you're right. What we voted on is probably outdated because that's all gone. We are using that process. So, we probably should do a new action item.
Because to, to me, I feel that we don't have anything right now. There is no.
I agree because it's, it's.
You're wearing one because you want to, not because we said so, because that's over. But if you want another one, we need to vote.
Right.
Another action.
Another action. Right.
Now, the governor's green designation, though, had nothing to do with mask wearing. The governor's green designation has only to do with indoor occupancy. Okay, so, yeah, this, this was relevant to the Pierce County risk dial from the health department in O'Neal. So, so yes, when they quit using the risk dial, we had no basis for where we're gonna be on here. And I understand when, when the governor, when the governor's schematic went green, that was just for occupancy rates.
And hospitalization.
It was, which is based on hospitalization.
Right.
Hospitalization rates.
Different criteria than what our health.
Yeah.
But didn't social distancing end? I mean, all restaurants could go back full capacity, buffets, bars, full capacity, no social distancing. I mean, that's what I read, and that's what I see.
Yeah, occupancy rates would definitely affect.
I was at Mary's last Friday.
Affect the social distancing, yeah. But, but also, though, if somebody at Mary's that you were next to for an extended period of time were to test positive and the health department would ask them, who have you been around? You could have been called by the health department and asked and expected to quarantine because that, that still, that still exists.
Yeah, recommended.
Yes, exactly.
I guess, as I thought about it this week, I'm kind of of the opinion, I mean, I would like to see it end, you know, at some point, for sure. I'm kind of agree with what Mr. Schmidt said. I'd hate for it to ruin the end of basketball, wrestling, you know, speech season. I guess I'd, I'd be all right with going for another month, evaluate that next meeting, and then maybe try and get loose in the restrictions at that point, but I would, I would hate to see what happened to Randolph's team. Happened to one of our teams, the wrestling team.
But I, a parent came up, we had the junior high basketball game today, anyway, and he kind of echoed that. He said, you came this far. It was only, there's only about three months left of school as it is. He goes, why, why would you get rid of them now?
I completely agree with you, Wyatt. If we were a closed environment, but the kids go outside, there's no restrictions of anything other than inside this building. It just doesn't make any sense. Maybe they're gonna get, they're gonna get.
What, what are we gonna do at the beginning of next year? Where I say, oh, we came this far, so let's put masks in 2021, 2022?
I don't want to do that.
That's what's gonna happen, guys.
Here's the, here's the deal, though.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of kids go to Pierce, I think.
Doc, Dr. Thor, when kids leave here, they're not mandated to go to Subway or to Mary's or whatever. They're required to come here, and it is a higher density environment than, you know, than, than they might find where, but, but I get it. You're right. They might think, they have to wear a mask when they're here. They can go to Mary's and they can take it off, or they can go to Speedy Mart or wherever. But here, they're required to come, and so requiring them to come and be in close contact with one another, that's why, you know, we have this, this layer of protection. You know, from having to either contract it, which is wherever we know, but, or be quarantined, which isn't as rare.
I got one last question.
But still there.
Is there any, if we were to go maskless, is there any liability issue that we did so?
No. No.
I'm just saying, you know, these other schools that did so or went voluntary masks, is the school liable if somebody got sick?
Nope. Nope. You, the only thing is, you wouldn't be eligible to host an NSA activity. Well, I even take that back. Yes, you could. You would just have to require it in your gym during those contests. So, you could, you could be a recommended mask school during the school day, but if you want to go to this contest, you must wear it. That, that, that's not unreasonable, but but yeah, that would be the, that would be the case there. If, if you, if you want to host an NSA activity, which we could possibly be asked to host a district final. That's possible. We've done that before, and we'd be eligible to do that.
I think if you ask any of the kids that graduated last year, if you could take back last spring and you could wear a mask just to have the better chance to finish the year out in track and golf and speech, I'm sure they would tell you, keep the mask on. Don't, these kids missed out on a lot. And I personally, I don't know if any of you have been affected by COVID. I haven't had it, but my daughter and her husband had it, very sick, and my youngest son, he's had it since a week ago Saturday and been to ER two times. He's very ill, 103 for the last six days. So, I think if we can, and as a sub, I, I feel safer when the kids have masks for my own health. And that's, that's just my opinion, but I've seen COVID in action in, in my family, and it's caused me a lot of concerns. That's not hysteria. That's reality in my life right now, so.
I've had it, so I've been.
And there's so many ways that it can affect a person. Jared, who's probably my most healthiest and strongest young man, he's been the sickest and now has inflamed lungs and, so it's a concern.
Did you guys all wear masks? Did he wear masks?
He does wear them. No.
So, he got it with.
You know where he didn't? Working out, because he has to be in shape for the Marines. Hasn't, and that's where he got it. Around kid, around other people. But he wears it at work because he has to. So, no, he did not have a mask, and that's where he's traced it back to, the gym.
I think you'd be hard pressed to find someone that hasn't been affected by this.
Yeah, so if you see somebody sick, it's, it's tough. And as, as a sub, I'm not sure I would sub because I don't want to go through what they've gone through.
I want to play this. It's gonna be about 30 seconds. This is the director of Omaha's Department of Health. This is a live, this was live for their mask mandate extension on Channel 7. You can all watch it, but just listen to what he says.
I'm here today to present some hard truths and hard data. First, I'll give you the hard data. I have here before you a Douglas County Health Department chart. Since Omaha has adopted the mask mandate, cases have only gone up. If the masks worked, that chart would look very, very different. Former New York Times Alex Berenson, New York Times reporter Alex Berenson has been studying the China virus. He's written extensively about it. He's written three books. He has concluded that masks are worthless virtual signaling. He also says the virus is gonna virus. We can destroy our economy.
He goes off anyway, but he showed, showed the chart where it went.
I don't disagree with the effectiveness. I don't think they are effective at all, but until they get rid of the quarantine issue, it still causes a problem for us.
We have to satisfy the health department's requirements.
That's my, that's. And I, I agree with Chance. I don't think that, the chance of us getting something happening is very, very rare, but it still can happen. I'd hate to, that's why I think if we could just get through another month and.
And then I see it in a month, they're gonna be like, well, we may have to barless school another two months until school's out.
We know we aren't even to the point, we aren't even to the point yet where we shut school down last year. We all know how long that seemed like it was from March on last year, and we're not even to that point yet. If we would, God forbid, if something like that happened.
Don't you think we kind of jumped the gun last year?
We know more now than we did then, but still, we've also got two new virus versions coming at us that we don't know anything about. They're supposed to be more contagious than what we've got. So, 30 days from now, we might be battling those instead of what we got. We don't know.
All right, here's my thing. I have no problem with anybody that wants to wear a mask, wear a mask. But my thing is, is my two kids personally, they freaking hate them. And I, it, and it's hard for me to tell them that they have to wear one when I'm the dad and I walked into Omaha and picked my dad up last Monday night, and I went right into a freaking restaurant and walked right through there without a mask, and I got a lot of dirty looks, but I don't care because I, I live in America. And then all them people, they take them off to eat, and then they put them right back on to get up and walk out. Like, let's, let's, how dumb does that seem? Does that make any sense?
We're not, we're not disputing that. We're just trying to get.
Well, I just think it needs to be, instead of mandated, let's sign a form. Let's let the parents sign a form or whatever so we don't have to wear masks for that kid. I came to the Christmas program. I didn't wear masks. Nobody came up and told me not to.
The NSA is the only one thing that's controlling this right now, right? Anything that's school function. Everything else is just recommended.
They don't have anything to do with us from eight to 3:30.
Correct. But I'm just saying, there's nothing that, in the state of Nebraska right now that mandates us to wear masks.
No, and they never were.
Well, I understand that.
They never were. But if you were to ask, I think if you were to ask the governor, he'd say, wear a mask. If you were to ask any health department director, I think 100% of them would say, continue to wear your mask. You know, so, Chance, and you're, you're exactly right. Hindsight is 2020.
I agree.
And, and we probably, when we go back to last May or last March, I mean, every school in the country, you know, shut down.
Yeah, there's schools in the east coast that are still shut down.
Maybe we didn't need to, but it doesn't do us any good at this point to, you know, to think that, you know, we, we jumped the gun along with, you know, every other school district in the country.
I'm not saying that we, the whole entire country jumped the gun. I mean, for crying out loud, they just crashed everything.
I'm sorry, boys and girls, when you can walk outside, you don't have to. Like, they told us, if we were in a controlled environment, I'm with you 100%, but we're not in a controlled environment. It just doesn't make any sense. It doesn't work. I mean, when they can go outside and socialize with everybody else and be around, the chances of spreading is much greater. I'm sorry, Dr. Earl.
Oh, no.
They go down to the Y, they play ball.
I understand, Dr. Thor. I understand.
Even wrestling a kid from another town. I mean, let's face it, that, that kids are around, not around our kids all day.
I mean, I'm with Mr. Schmidt. We can comply with the, the Nebraska sports activity thing and, you know, do the gym thing like we're supposed to so we can continue to host up, but, you know, to make kids that are healthy in school that punishing them to do this, I, I can't do it anymore, guys. Can't. So.
Well, I'd like to stay where we are for the 30 days till the March meeting and revisit it just for reasons of what we talked about with the teams, so they don't get quarantined and missed out. I don't, I don't think any one of them would want to, you know, miss out just so they didn't have to wear a mask. And I'd also like, we haven't talked much about teachers and parents, you know, I'd like to give them the opportunity. If they have an opinion, they can come next month and voice that opinion. You know, if we got staff members that are concerned about their health, if we quit wearing masks, or if we have parents that are concerned about their students with or without masks, I think they should have the opportunity to be able to speak before this board, before we make a decision. So, I, I would like to make the motion that we just leave everything the way it is and revisit it a month from now.
I second that, Mr. Schmidt.
Motion to table, yeah, month, month of the time.
We're just table, we're gonna make an agenda item for next month. We're gonna table this month if it's not an action.
It's not an action, so yes. Maintain, maintain the mask mandate to be revisited at the March meeting.
Well, do we need to vote on this motion?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Well.
I mean, because.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt.
We don't have anything right now, so we need to, to vote. In my opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, right now, we're just in limbo.
The criteria went away for the original motion that we made back in August.
It, it would.
Anybody else notice that the room got set up differently too now, all of a sudden?
It's just because Dr. Earl and I were too lazy to change it because we were here first.
This is probably, this is probably the way it was for the school day.
Yeah.
Just hasn't been moved back.
No, no, I set it up this way so that we would be at least six feet apart.
Okay.
Did you?
Yeah.
You have to be in some meetings and you haven't been in other regions.
So, I didn't make the motion that we stay with the mask mandate for another month and revisit it, and it was seconded. And I suggested, so now we will vote. Dr. Thor?
No.
Deb?
Yes.
Chance?
No.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries for it too. So, we'll revisit this again and, and vote. Okay, board developed, number 11.
Well, Devin Chance, this is you.
Oh, this is us.
You can, I didn't watch the NIA. A lot of stuff gone off my dad, so.
Yes, she did. Uh, let's see. Well, one of the things I did learn was about the superintendent evaluation and that they have an evaluation that you can purchase where they compile all of the information, but that, that's extra money.
Say that again.
That the NASB has their own evaluation for superintendents, and you do it digitally, and then, but it costs you, and then they compile all the information for you. That's, that's just another tool. Let's see.
What'd you think of it?
They didn't show it to us. So, but I think you got it last year from Marcia, right? When she came and spoke?
She talked about it, but I haven't talked about it.
You haven't seen it? You gave it to me. You haven't seen it? You gave it to me.
Those guidelines.
Well, it was the.
I thought she handed it to you guys that night.
I don't think so. Everything I gave you, I have a copy of it.
Because it had all the questions and all the.
And the other thing I think was valuable is, it's, they have to have a lot of resources if we have questions and guidance.
Sorry.
I thought she had it.
I thought she had it for all of us too, because I thought I had two of them.
Anyway, it's just a, a valuable resource if we have questions and they, for the finances too. That was kind of, I, I, I felt like I graduated. I was done.
You're done now?
Four, four nights of three hours and more. But nobody asked in questions at the end. That was good. Actually, it was me that asked. Could you elaborate on, I can't remember what I.
We went with Dr. Earl. It was quite a day. It was very like, it's too bad you had to do it online. Is there a lot of interaction?
It, it does show, it does give a great example about how face-to-face versus remote learning, the difference in effectiveness. So.
But, you know, this was 12 hours from 5:30 to 8:30 in the evening. That is a tough time to be attentive. Now you know what.
Your, your question had to do with negotiations, which will be brought up later this fall, but Nick, the, the early retirement incentive being policy versus negotiation.
That was my elaboration, yeah. Anyway, so, it was on, on superintendent evaluation and, and finances, which was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Long.
For three hours.
Three plus.
I said in 20 minutes, it runs down at State School Board. That's long.
No, they're, these people love their job. They're very good at it.
Okay, number 12, Teaching and Learning Committee.
Is that where we met?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was us meeting the other night. You guys want it or you only had to talk about what we wanted?
Who's on the, who's on the committee?
Us three.
Us three.
You can maybe start, Mr. Schmidt. You can throw out some comments. If you just want to give an overview of what your changes were.
Uh, overview of talking to them the other night. We met and talked about our graduation requirements. Um, biggest changes looking at, we required 265 credits before and now we're requiring 240. Uh, but when we broke that down and looked at it versus credits offered and credits required, we're actually requiring a higher percentage of credits now than what we were before, um, to graduate. Um, we struck out a bunch of the classes, uh, just taking the names of them out because those change from year to year once in a while, like our social studies changed and when we offer it. Um, so we just struck that out and said, we're doing 30 credits in social studies, 40 credits in English and specifically what classes you had to take in order to graduate. Um, and then, some of the other ones we talked about were the visual and performing arts, uh, foreign language, taking those out. We're still offering all those classes and we have a plethora of kids that are going to take them, but we're not going to require it. And some of the discussion that we talked about was, um, you know, we require a kid to take art, but we're not requiring them to take a shop class, or we're not requiring them to take an ag class or an FCS class. So just trying to be a little bit fair there, where, um, we offer all these classes, we encourage kids to take them, but we're not going to require it for graduation. Um, that was about.
The finance, the finance.
Personal finance.
I thought that was a really good idea.
Yep. Um, we had 30 cred, 30 credits. Well, we did 40 of social studies. We moved that back to 30 and then did 10 credits of economics and personal finance, which falls under social studies. Uh, so we're requiring personal finance for all of our kids. Uh, with that comes a careers class, so it helps them look at different education paths, whether they want to go for an associate's degree or a four-year degree, um, get them a bachelor's and then masters after that. But it helps them look at what education they need for the career field they want to go into, and then also gives them their basis for creating budgets and, and how to plan their money and insurance and looking into the future and what they need to know, um, to have all their i's dotted and t's crossed. So, um, I think it's very valuable for kids to have going into the world.
I'm drinking tired too.
One other thing you pointed out at, at the meeting is that, uh, like, most of the other schools are requiring like 240 to 250 credits, uh, which is where we're at now, the 240. And, uh, he had said that most of our graduates will graduate with over 280.
280 is what we offer and barring somebody failing a class, every one of our kids will graduate with 280 credits.
Who, who keeps track of this? I mean, is there guidance counselors that sit down with students and stuff like that?
Yep, Mr. Peter sits down with all of them. So every spring, he'll sit down with them. Uh, last year I had to do it online. This year he'll do it face-to-face with them and talk about, uh, what requirements they have to have, and that's where the foreign language comes in. If they're looking at a four-year degree, then you need to have two years of Spanish. So he starts working on them. Um, so he gets to know each kid and what they want to do and kind of builds it from there.
Okay, it's been quite a while since we made any changes to this, I think. I don't know if we did it since you've been here, but I know.
Is that to the credits?
Yeah.
That was prior to my arrival, I think was the last time it was.
Yeah.
Adjusted.
Been a while.
So, so that'll be an action item on 15, but just the, great job committee work, you know, to do the little bit of extra discussion and rationale and so, so action item 15.
For the kids to make choices on their own and get the classes fit in where they have trouble getting them.
We're working on the freshman class. Right now, they have one elective that they get to pick. We're trying to build it so we can get two and give them a little bit more freedom. But then as they get older, they get more electives and they get more choice. Uh, the other staff that I just thought of was, uh, the previous five years, our kids averaged 291 credits when they graduated. And so with this moving forward, like I said, they're all going to graduate with 280. So essentially, it's, it's one class and one year difference is it. So.
Dr. Earl, was our policy, it's in the magazine or notebook here, just the accurate one?
You, you have, yes, the one that you have is accurate. The one that's in your packet would be the new language.
Okay.
That you're voting on.
Okay.
Um, and this will take two readings.
Any more questions on that before we move on? Okay, thank you for your work, committee. Number 13, Advisory Committee.
So the board formed a committee last month of Mrs. Jensen, Mr. Anderson, and? Dr. Thor. Yes, and that would be to help kind of prepare some board goals for the coming year. Um, so we communicated by email, uh, with our external visit coming up here in the next six weeks and certainly by the end of the school year, possibly having a new academic goal or goals for the school. The committee decided to give that time to happen because board goals might be predicated some or based some on, uh, that academic goal. So, uh, that advisory committee will stay in touch and go to work probably maybe a little more, uh, this summer. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, here, number 14, S R 2 funds.
Okay, so, yes, and I could have put CARES 2.0, which is not the official title, but anyway, uh, we received, as you, as you recall, uh, last spring, some $60,000. We had to share some of that with Zion. Their share is cut different out of CARES 2 funds. So all these funds are available to Plainview Public Schools. Uh, Zion has, with his contacting and worked directly with NDE, they worked through us on CARES last year. They'll work directly with this federal grant themselves this time. So I don't even know what their allotment is. Ours is significantly more, uh, as you can see. Um, and, and so we will have some decisions to make about, uh, where to, to spend that money. Um, I did identify some things on your claims that would be eligible expenses. Uh, in fact, some things that we had already purchased that I can now claim and get reimbursement for. Um, anything with air quality, I mean, if we, we could have put this towards the elementary HVAC, you know, which wouldn't have covered it, but it, anything that has to do with, with air filtration. Uh, so the two devices we purchased in September, um, uh, even though we've paid for them, I can claim those and will be reimbursed for those. Um, but when, in visiting with teachers and in administrative team, we would cert, we, we want to give this money to teachers. And, uh, to do that, uh, means teachers would be working with kids. Uh, and so we want to create a, a pretty, uh, robust summer school, well beyond what we've done in the past, because we know that what COVID has done has disrupted the education of kids. That's been the, the, the worst effect, uh, probably in, in, obviously in our schools is, is they missed all of last spring and in this year, due to either contagions in, uh, themselves or, or more likely their families in quarantines or teachers missing for days or weeks at a time, COVID has disrupted their education dramatically over the course of the past year. So there will be massive learning gaps among certain kids, particularly those socioeconomic, lower on the socioeconomic scale. Uh, so we've been, we've known for months that, okay, we need to identify, uh, where we need to accelerate learning and who for. And we can do that quite easily. Uh, Mrs. Thompson, in particular, knows already. She'd go down her whole list of every kid in her building and she knows who needs to be accelerated. The only opportunity really to accelerate is this summer. So, uh, we would like to piece together a pretty robust summer school, uh, which, uh, wouldn't require, um, this amount of money, but it would be probably the best place we could spend. Some of, some or most of this $231,000 would be to directly affect kids. Now, health and safety is one thing, so when we buy air filtration, um, uh, you know, systems, you know, that, that's, that's great. It helps, makes, it helps to make our environment safer. Okay? But, uh, but that doesn't accelerate, you know, kids' learning. Um, so that, that's, that's one particular area. So over the course of the next, uh, you know, actually several months, because we have months and months and months in which to claim these funds, um, we'll have to have some discussions about, uh, where, where the board, uh, feels this would best benefit kids. So when I say give it to teachers, I essentially mean hire teachers to, uh, teach this summer. And when I say this summer, I'm not talking about all summer. I mean, we're, we're, we're talking essentially about maybe 16 days, maybe four days a week for a month, something like that. Um, it's, and, and we all, we've already had a summer school, but this one would be, uh, summer school on steroids, so to speak, compared to what we've done in the past. Um, so we're, we're kind of working on a framework for that. And I think we might have something, uh, concrete for you to look at next month. Um, as the principals have been talking with the teachers already a little bit, some are available and interested, some not so much, and that's fine. Um, but we will have options, I think, to, to educate a, a much larger group of kids in the summer than what we've done in the past. Okay? So, uh, I'll send you more details with regard to that, but you can also obviously conduct your own easy research on, uh, on these funds and what's eligible.
Would it be voluntary then on the students' part or would you?
Well, yes, we can't mandate, uh, summer school, but, uh, we would certainly send a pretty strong invitation to, to some kids based on data that we need to accelerate, because of the, you know, disruption that kids have suffered over the course of the past year.
It would be a full-scale K-12, wouldn't just be elementary?
Yeah, yeah. Elementary and high school are different animals. Our, our summer school and the high school has been primarily credit recovery. So students that have lost credit for one reason or another, and that's generally because of, generally, it's because of attendance issues or effort, uh, not because they just struggle with the content. Um, but we can figure that out. Mr. Schmidt knows who those kids are that need, uh, that need instruction versus just they need Apex and recover those credits remotely. Um, so they would, they would look different, definitely, depending on which side of Woodland Avenue you're on.
This money has, it has to be spent on these eligible expenses, right?
Yes.
It's not something you can just pay.
Yeah, so it's also been granted, it has to be approved. I say exactly what, uh, prepare a budget, uh, and say exactly what we want to spend these funds on.
Could you use these, uh, funds to hire a parent for a year for the high school that we talked about last year? Because we have kids that are behind?
Yes, for class, I think you can use it for, you know, for, for some class size reduction. The thing is though, you know, when grants go away.
Right.
Then what happens to, you'll have a decision to make, you know.
Right, right.
Can't build a wall with it too.
That's my thought, is to make sure.
We're going to get that wall, yeah, somewhere.
Get that rant.
Okay, any more questions on that? Now we'll move on to action items. Number 15, discuss and take possible action on first reading of revision to policy 611.07, graduation requirements. Any more discussion on this?
I'll make a motion to accept first reading changes to policy 611.07.
I'll second it.
First and seconded, myself, yes. Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Champ?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Motion passes 611. Sixteen, discuss and take possible action on second reading of policy 202.01, board member code of ethics. Any discussion on this? No, okay, motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt policy number 202 dot 01.
Second?
I'll second.
First and seconded, Jim?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Champ?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Motion carries 611. Number 17, discuss and take possible action on second reading of policy 202.04, ethics violation. Any discussion? Now I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt policy 202. Am I on the right, 1.04?
Mm-hmm. Correct. Second?
Second.
First and seconded, Champ?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Got you. Wyatt?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Got you, Deb.
Stop, yes.
You? Myself, yes. Motion carries. I'm glad to hear you guys listened to me anyway. Number 18, discuss and take possible action on contract terms for Mrs. Heather Thompson for the 2021, 2022 single year.
What did we do that raise for, that last year? Or that?
She's been in for just her second year here.
You've been here three years?
That's her second.
Second year.
It's a year ago, like now, when we were over in the other school. Before we get into, uh, the percentage or whatever, you both asked to go, go to the national convention. And we did pay for that for Mrs. Novicki when she was here and she went. But we only had one principal. Okay, so we had to pay for one principal. Would you be interested at all? I mean, I don't know what you get out of it. Would, would be any way that we could do it every other year? So we'd said one each one year, one the next. Would you be willing to do something like that? Or is it that important to you to go every year? Or, or what do you get out of it?
I know I wasn't planning on going this year. I just wanted something in there where if I decided to go and wanted to go to national convention and use that, that it was in there that I could get. Uh, because when I looked at it, and we talked about it, it said state level. Um, so it's not something where, um, you know, I think I would utilize it every single year and have a, a cost for the district. It's just something where if there's something I really want to see or do with it, I would have that option to go.
Yeah, and I think, I feel the same. It would be a matter of, um, who the speakers are and what the main trainings are that are going to be there. Um, as to whether I would really feel an urgency.
Are they the same convention for elementary and high school to put this up?
No.
Two separate ones.
They used to be.
Are they both in Chicago?
No.
Bahamas, I think.
Fargo.
Well, then I'm going to the high school one.
Well, you know, we had that expense of Mrs. Novicki, and if we could just, you know, maintain that, if you would agree to go, I mean, I don't care whether one of you goes two years in a row, if the other one doesn't care, but would offer, you know, one per year, if you'd be willing. Or maybe both of you go one year, but neither of you go the next, you know, if you had a really good one that you. If you had a really good one that you wanted both to go to one year. And maybe nobody wants to offer that anyway, I don't know. I just know we, we did pay for that in the house.
Kyle said he's good with that, because his is in Illinois here.
High school, yeah, high school council that's already.
No, but that's, I mean, yeah, that's reasonable.
And I don't know how they'd word that in contracts, when it's two separate contracts and one. We'll figure that out.
I think if you, well, yeah, having contractual language always helps, but, you know, I think if you kind of also just have an agreement and understanding based on the conversation that just happened, I think you're okay with leaving that language out of the contract.
I think that's what they used to do when we had an elementary and high school. It was every other year.
Was it?
Mm-hmm. One went, and the next year the other one went.
So is everybody okay with that? Or do we need any more discussion in that part of the contract? Or is everybody good with that part of it?
I think that's a good compromise.
Okay, so Mrs. Thompson, you're asking for a 4.7% raise on your 85,000, which will get you up to 89. So comparing elementary to high school principals, why do high school principals make more money than elementary principals at the same school pretty much consistently? Is there a reason? Do you do more work? I'll ask Mrs. Thompson that question. Does he do more work than you do?
No. Now ask him, and he'll say the same thing.
But just looking at the two arrays you gave us and the ones that have comparable schools.
It's generally because of high school principals have supervisory responsibilities in the evenings, much more so than an elementary principal typically would. Now, Mrs. Thompson kept her book for volleyball, so she attended certainly a majority, if not 75% of volleyball games. Every administrative, every meeting, every Monday morning when we meet and we go through the activities for the week, we determine who's, who's supervising, and we include Mrs. Thompson in on that. So she represents the district as our advisor, as our administrator representative. I can't speak for other elementary principals around, but certainly she, she does her share. But that's typically the, the reason for that, Mike, is high school principals go to most every home basketball game, volleyball game, and elementary principals typically don't.
Sure, yeah, I never thought of that.
I just want to point out one thing. I've been doing some rough math on both of these. What I'm doing is I'm taking the salary divided by the population, and I guess when I look at it that way, we don't fall nearly as low on the list as what, you know, the gross salary looks like. Like, for instance, right now at 85,000, we're roughly $440 per student of 193 students, where if you compare that to the person in Battle Creek, who's been a principal for 31 years and in the district for 16 years, he's made, he or she, I don't know what it is, $104,000, some odd dollars, 242 students, they're only making $433 per student. I just, I don't know, that's a bad way to look at it, but I think that we might pay a little too much for a school we are.
You have a comment, then I'll burrow. I mean, they're paying their principal $90,000 for 167 students. That's higher than the raise that, that being requested.
Well, you know, Ponca's 91 for 141. That used to be a lot bigger than the grade year.
So, really?
Yeah, there used to be C1 all the time on the grade year too.
I'm just saying, Wyatt, that it's not as far down the list as what it looks like on this list. That guy in Burwell also has been there for nine years, or has nine years in education, I guess.
Heather's got 10.
How about the poor person in Pierce? They're only making $246 per student.
Yeah.
Guy in Ponca's making a lot of money.
Is this based on how many years it's been principal or just education as a whole?
So the first one is years in education.
Right.
And then the second one is?
In district.
Is that, that's the administration.
So, but that's not a total amount of years, it's just in that district, correct?
I believe so, yes.
I think the Pierce, when you're talking about Chance, from what I understand, he's a new,
He's a second year.
This is his second year only as an administrator.
Yeah.
So that would make a difference in his salary versus the number of kids.
And just so you know, the reason I went with these schools, so our schools may look a little bit different, but I tried to go with schools that were just elementary principal. And there were a lot that were elementary principal and superintendent, or elementary principal and high school principal, and we tried to make sure that those weren't on our lists together. And so if they had a second job title, like the elementary counselor or whatever, I still included those because I have many titles as well, I guess. But I tried to stick with
Just K6.
Just K6 and elementary principal.
Okay.
So.
Do you have, do you have your numbers from last year? Because when we gave you that $11,000 a year raise, wasn't that like a 10% jump annually? Do you remember that, what those numbers were?
I don't remember what those were.
16%.
Yeah.
I think I read in the paper it was 16%.
15%.
It's 16.
One thing, I'm just gonna throw this out there, take it however you want, that's for pro or con. And Deb, I'm sure you know this, because being a teacher with Chance, our teachers and all our other staff gets the cost of living raise every year that we decide upon, but they're also on a schedule where they get a longevity raise, because every two or three years.
Well, it depends on which column they're on. So every year they get an extra four and a quarter percent.
But even our, our classified staff gets this.
Yes, we've got a schedule that every five years, so they start out at a 2%, a one and a half, and then a 1% or a 2%.
So it's every five years?
Yeah.
I thought it was every two or three.
It starts out that way.
Oh, okay.
But then it goes to about every five.
But anyway, they get the, the cost of living raise, plus that kicks in every so many years that they automatically get that. It's not even a negotiation. So our superintendent and principals don't get that longevity. So if theirs is all in what we decide here, there's nothing automatic that kicks in.
But like, what do you have to say then about like Wayne? That guy's been a principal for six years, and he's only getting $196 a student, or she, he or she. I guess I, it's Plainview, Nebraska. I, I personally feel like we paid Dr. All way too much, too.
I guess I've never looked at it as per student that way. I mean, it's a different way of looking at it. But I don't know that because you have 25 or 30 less kids, that your job is any easier. You've still got as many teachers, you've still got as many programs to implement, you've still got probably doing everything. Teachers are the ones working with the individual kids. Principals are working more with the teachers and the curriculum and all that stuff. And each teacher has to have their own curriculum. For, they have five kids or 50 kids in that room, they still have to have a curriculum.
I agree, but the bigger the school, the more people they have underneath of them. I mean, I'm pretty sure that Northwood Public.
Yes and no. I mean, you can have 10 kids in a classroom, if you can have classes of 28 kids.
I'm not talking about the teacher, Mike, I'm talking about the principal. Principal at Northwood Public has to deal with more teachers, more parents, than what the principal at Plainview Public has to deal with, because we don't have the population. Am I right, or wrong?
Well, they have many more elementary buildings, so it's, it's not all at NPS in one elementary building, like you would have their high school, obviously, it's massive. Their elementaries, I guess, their, their enrollments are probably larger than our elementary, but not 10 times the size that their high school would be compared to ours.
I got a question for Mrs. Thompson. Last year when we gave you that raise, did you shortly thereafter apply for another job?
I did. And then two days later withdrew my application.
Why'd you apply? Weren't you happier?
Um, I was, but it was a principal job at the school that I kind of grew up in, so at the same school that I taught at for seven years. And so I had a lot of people saying, "Come back, come back, come back." And so I was really torn. And so I thought about it, thought about it, thought about it, and couldn't decide. Finally said, "You know what, I'm just gonna put my application in, I think I have to." And then said, "What the hell am I doing? This is where I need to be, I have things that I need to get done here, and I have this plan that, of all of these things that I want to do here." And so I withdrew my application. And then I got a phone call from HR saying, "Did you withdraw your application?" And I said, "Yes, I did." "Are you sure you want to withdraw your application?" "Yes, I'm sure." "Anything else you need to know about that?" "In an open meeting?"
Well.
Because you sure could have come and asked me about that when the camera wasn't on.
Well, I just.
But you didn't.
First of all, I want you to understand that when I voted to give you that raise, I did so because you're worth it. Okay? To me, what you've done for the school was wonderful. The reading programs that you've implemented, the change of how educations went this way, I really appreciate it. But to me, as an individual, as a citizen of Plainview, it tells me that you weren't happy, you know, and that hurts, it does. I mean, so I don't know what to do about it. That's just where I'm sitting on this issue.
At that time, she probably wasn't very happy, Jim, because you just called her a liar in public meetings. But it doesn't make too many people happy. So maybe that's the reason she went looking for another job, and then she thought second about it.
I don't believe that was the same time.
Yeah, it was real close.
But thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, you're welcome.
I'm not trying to take away from anything that you do by saying that. I'm just comparing it dollars for kids, and that's just, I'm looking at it as like if I was running a business and you were my employee.
Yeah.
Like.
But I do want to say, when you look at it that way, I don't think you can really compare any two students. So I don't think you can necessarily say, you know, just divide it dollar per student. Because there are some students that you're going to spend a significant amount more time with, just like there are some teachers that you spend a significant amount.
That's probably why Santia is so high for student two.
Could be, could be.
Some other funding that helps make it a little more lucrative for them. But Chance, that's irrelevant, that's irrelevant, you know,
Yeah.
comparative thing. You use a variety of things to compare, and so that, that's why I did tell both principals, I said, "Make sure you put student populations of who you're comparing yourself to, because student populations of those buildings are relevant."
What is the cost of living percentage increase? What is that?
The cost of living? Oh, that's kind of determined by the government every year, probably, and I don't know it off the top of my head, but anywhere from two and a half to three and a half.
Okay.
Jim? Yeah, but is it generally between two and a half and three and a half?
No, last year it was like 1.6. This year it's gonna be up and warm for.
Is it the same? Is it the same as what they give social security raise? Is that cost of living raise?
I didn't hear anything.
Is it the same as what they give for social security raises? Is that your cost of living raise?
No, I don't, I talk to my mom, she's upset about social security.
Well, I know that's good and very much, so I don't know if it's a saver.
Depends on the economy, on what cost of living is gonna be, obviously.
Mrs. Thompson, could you maybe give us an idea of how many hours in a week you put in?
Oh.
I mean, I know it's not 40.
I know it's not 50.
No.
It's way over that.
And, and, I mean, there's not a typical week. Most days I come in right around 7:00. Well, you see me at my babysitter's stop.
She doesn't have time to make breakfast, so.
Well, you know, time and energy. My kids like cereal, so it's all good. I come in around 7:00 and I go home around 5:00, 5:30, depending. There are some nights that I still do additional things, just like anybody else. I mean.
Do, yeah.
Yeah, there's nights I still do additional things. So, I don't know, it's.
You share, you share the administrative duties, you know, like Dr. All said. For example, Plainview wrestling invite here. How many hours, how many hours do you need?
I got the shorter lipstick that day.
Thank goodness.
Yeah. There's a lot of duties that are not, you know, listed anyway, that you take care of.
There are.
Anyway, I really appreciate this, especially with COVID, anyway, this last year. The amount of planning that all three of you administrators have had to do.
Well, and I think that's added to the hours.
Anyway, was asked of you originally in your contracts here.
Yeah.
One other thing is all the, none of these other teachers have settled a pay raise for this year, so, you know, they're all gonna go up too.
Yeah.
So, you know, just to go up, what they go up is just gonna maintain the same position that we're at.
If we bump her to 89, which is what she's asking for, now, she still doesn't reach, anyway. On this scale, if it doesn't change, it still doesn't reach, anyway, because it's the top 2/3s.
Then they're gonna go up too.
They're gonna go up too.
I'm not at all trying to be unreasonable with what I request.
You know, if you look at the, the schools that are on both of these sheets and add the two principals together, there's a lot of schools outside there spend a lot more money on two principals than what we are. Now, granted, our principals are very young, but I think they're also very good.
Well, I'm fine with 4.7. I'll just go ahead and say it.
4.5 sounds much better.
You could go like that. $89,000 is a nice ground down.
So is $88,000.
Well, if you want to make a motion, how's that? Any more conversation?
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the contract terms for Mrs. Thompson for the 21, 2021-2022 year for a raise for 4.7% at an $89,000 annually.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, it's been first and second, any more discussion? Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Chance?
No.
Deb?
Yes.
Jim?
No.
Myself, yes. Motion carries 4 to 2. Okay, number 19, discuss and take possible action on contract terms for Mr. Kyle Schmidt for the 2021-2022 school year.
Mr. Schmidt, is that activity director, is the $8,000, is that your salary you're getting out for that job alone?
65 is what I asked for last year and was approved.
Okay, but it's just for, I'm thinking of all the hours.
Just for activities, or activities directly.
I think of all the hours you put in for that job.
Correct me if I'm wrong, weren't we paying Robin Reed 11.5?
10, somewhere.
10.5?
Yeah, that is a lot of hours for that.
He took on that job on the chief, you know, this last year, Kyle did.
He did?
He took it on, on the chief. You only get paid $6,500 for that, for what we're paying somebody else to do it for 10, anyway.
So what do you mean by, on the chief, what do you mean by that?
Did it cheaper than the guy.
Oh, on the chief. I thought it was the chief, and I'm like.
Sorry, I take down my mask.
We're pirates, Wyatt. There's no chiefs in a pirate ship. I was offended for a minute, Dr. Earl. I'm here for you. Pirates. I'm sorry.
But it clearly ended up, you're putting in more hours than what you thought you were going to.
Just a couple more, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I've seen that.
I'm sure COVID's made it worse, but if that straightens out will help.
A little regulation where there's some similarity between seasons, that would be nice.
Did you have a look on a rate for, for athletic directors?
I did not pull those up, no.
I know they're all over the place. I've heard Frank Laurel was paying fifty thousand one time for their AD.
What? Is that his only job?
Yeah.
Is that his only job? Yeah. Ray Dora, that used to be his full-time job, right? Before he retired?
Was it?
I think so.
They moved him back to the classroom, but for many years, he was AD only.
Yeah, he was AD only. It's a big job.
Yeah, it's a big job.
I helped Cory with it before and I'm telling you, I didn't get paid, but he did. I should call him now. There's a lot to think about in that job.
Well, I don't have a problem with the athletic director raise part, but I don't know that I can go with the six point three on the sound part of it.
I, I personally think on the athletic director part, he might be being a little light though. You know, that may be.
Still be light, that'd be.
Like, I think he's deserving of more than, you know. Cause I remember when I was in school, how much Mr. Reed had to do. And I'm sure Kyle does just as much or more. And I guess I, I don't have much of a problem with that six point three, just cause I feel like we're giving a little on the one end and taking on the, you know, meeting in the middle. That's my opinion. I do think that Mr. Schmidt wears a lot of hats.
Agreed.
He's also a football coach too, right?
Yep. Yeah, but he makes a ton of money on that.
Yeah. My salary for that about two thousand dollars a month.
Fifty cents an hour.
Close.
Again, we're still on the bottom third. Don't be ready.
There sure are a lot of young principals in the area. I don't know how young they are, but put out very many years of experience.
I think that will continue because there are so many superintendent openings. So principals will continue to move up to superintendent.
Are you happy here, Kyle?
Yes.
Even happier with a six point three percent. Well, I'm a big believer, you have good people, you gotta, you might keep them here, you gotta pay them. So I'll make a motion again. I'll make a motion to approve contract terms for Mr. Schmidt for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two year at a six point three percent raise for an annual salary of ninety-two thousand as his principal. And as athletic director, a twenty-three percent raise for an eight thousand dollar annual salary.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been first and second, Dr. Thor?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Chance?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Motion carries. Sixty-one.
In the paper, will it say going from sixty-five hundred to eight thousand? Or does it just say a twenty-three percent raise?
Tell him.
I really think.
Right here, what you want him to say.
Well, I think you need to, when you just see twenty-three percent raise, that doesn't give the whole picture versus going from sixty-five to eight thousand. You know what?
Are you asking to have context there?
I do, I am. I am. Please.
Context is very important in publication.
Well, you know, when you read it as a taxpayer payer and a paper.
Twenty-three percent doesn't.
Twenty-three percent. Is different than what you actually.
Especially when you don't see these and.
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Twenty-three percent seems a lot more than fifteen hundred dollars.
That's what I'm, yeah, Chance.
Thank you.
Number twenty, discuss and take possible action on accepting the resignation of Mary Sturkle in conclusion of the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year and approval for the early retirement incentive. Grab your resignation letter and the packet. Twenty-one years, huh?
She's gonna start another career.
What is she gonna do?
She bought a, she bought a business with her son-in-law. Some screen printing and vinyl.
Vinyl wrapping.
Vinyl wrapping. So she's young enough, vibrant enough, she's got time for another career.
Well, good for her, well missed her.
Certainly served, playing in public schools for two plus decades. Very, very well.
Very well. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the request for Mary Sturkle to receive early retirement incentive and to accept her resignation effective at the end of the twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one school year.
Second, I'll second. Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Dr. Thor?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries six to two. Okay, report, activity directors report.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's number twenty-one.
Oh.
Mr. South.
Discuss and take possible action on approving annual NSAB membership. Do you know whether this is the same price as a year ago or they go up a lot every year?
I'd say it's probably within fifty bucks.
Would have to go back and look at last year's. Certainly very close.
If we didn't bring this, what would we lose?
Well, on the previous, I guess, that's why I put that letter in there.
Right there.
Identified as number twenty-one. This shows you, um, well, the, the natural gas purchasing, for one, that's saving us good money right now.
Seven grand in four months, year over year, just in case you guys wanted to know.
It saves us seven grand?
It has saved us seven thousand dollars.
Really?
In four, in four months, just four months, year over year.
I'll make a motion.
He has to run away, yeah, before they go up.
Well, that was a good move then. Do we do anything ourselves with the alecaph and?
We don't. We, we go through Bush and Row with Denny Johnson. So we don't use alecaph.
I guess I think it's a no-brainer if it's saving us seven thousand dollars and we only gotta spend thirty-seven hundred fifty-five to do it. So I'll make a motion that we approve membership in NSAB for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Second.
First and second, it's Deb?
Yes.
Dr. Thor?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries six to two. Now reports, activity directors report.
Like I said, postseason's about ready to start, so wrestlers are sending in twelve out of thirteen wrestlers Saturday to Weeping Water for a chance to go to state and finish in the top four. Girls' basketball starts on, they will play Tuesday. They will not play in the Monday night game, they'll play Tuesday night. Location hasn't been set yet for that. And then the boys district starts the week after that. And like I said, the NSA is keeping everything right now as is for indoor sports. So fifty percent capacity and mask mandate for everything that they're doing and everything that people host, so. Speech just got underway, conference speech is moved up, that's actually Wednesday this week. So we'll be in lineup for that. And then they're gone again Saturday, so. But then it's every Saturday until we get to districts, which is in March. So that's about it, everything should be on that. Bowling, bowling today, had the inaugural state bowling. Today was individuals, so we sent three boys, that was Trevor Dora, Luke Pellets and Derek Ricks. All three of them bowled, they did four games in a row at the beginning, round robin. Took your total point, uh, total pins knocked down and then they took the top eight into a bracket and then bowled it out from there for the championship. Luke was tied for eleventh, he bowled seven hundred and fifteen pins. He had to hit seven twenty-two to get into the top eight, that's where the break was. So we were really close to getting somebody into the final one. And then I think Derek finished twenty-seventh and Trevor finished thirty-first, so. And that's the entire state, so it's, everybody's in class A, so they were competing against Papillion and Millard Schools. And Fremont had a kid that averaged two-ten or better on all his games today, so. Very competitive, but the kids did well, they represented us well, you'd have been proud of them, so. Very cool atmosphere too, it was, so.
Is there any talk of splitting that, at least into two classes in the future?
Not right now, I don't know what they have the number, what, what they're looking for. I think there's thirty-eight schools right now, so I'm guessing they're gonna want fifty before they split it. That's just my guessing for our number, but.
I did not know that was all class today. Wow.
Yeah.
It's pretty impressive.
How many totaled, individuals?
Uh, I think there were sixty of them bowling. Cause there was thirty-two lanes going and they were all full, so it was pretty cool to see.
Great.
Administrator report, you got technology on it.
Yeah, okay, so technology updates. Right now with the Care's two point O, um, I talked to Tom and we are pricing iPads and covers in carts for the lower grades. And then the headphones that Mike was asking about. So having devices in all of the elementary classrooms. The kiddos can get on and listen to the weekly stories or on IXL. It can read the math problems or the reading problems to the kids. The problem with that is when you have fifteen or twenty kids in the room trying to listen to their stories at the same time. And it gets a little loud. So teachers, I had several teachers come to me and ask if we could get headphones. And so I looked up different headphones and ordered enough headphones for all of the students for next year. So I included the sixth grade class, but I also included the preschool class. And then these headphones will travel with the carts, so they'll go with the students for next year. So they're pretty good headphones and then we ended up getting a fifteen percent discount on them because of the amount that we purchased or the number of headphones that we purchased. So that was that cost that you saw.
Professional development, so we started working with all of our different committees and having them meet. And frameworks comes out with an annual checklist. And so we've had groups meeting and working on filling that sheet out essentially, making sure that we have everything ready for the visit that's coming up here at the end of March. So the last two days that we've done professional development, those teams have got together and they've been working on filling out that sheet. It's an ongoing document that we have everything on. And then our leadership team's gonna look at it. We've been meeting twice a, twice a month, going over that and making sure we have everything finalized and have what we need. This last one, we did Marzano development, so last year at this time, we went through with the teachers. They identified, I believe it was twelve elements in the four domains that we look for when we evaluate teachers and go through and what we should see in the classroom whenever we walk in there. So we did a refresher with that and went over the, the rubric that we're looking at using and that those teachers actually created last spring. And eventually what we'll do is put that all together into one big rubric and transition into using that as our evaluation tool at some point in time. And then our MTSS team, we signed up with ESU to have Tony's coming in, right?
Yes, Tony and Steph.
Yep, and they're gonna come in and get us caught up, it's a five-year training for our staff. And we have a team that's in charge of that and we're gonna get that team char, or trained. And then they're gonna be in charge of training the rest of our staff. So this is our first real pilot of empowering our teachers, giving them the opportunity to be leaders with their, their coworkers and give them the opportunity to, to build that relationship and build a program that really benefits kids, so.
So basically they'll have two days of training each year and one in the fall, one in the spring. And then they'll come back and implement things that they've learned at this training for our MTSS model. So it should be pretty cool.
And then parent teacher conferences are on Thursday. Really hoping that our numbers go up. I think if you read the paper, you know, last, in the fall, we had ninety-five percent for our elementary, we're at thirty-three for the high school. Mother Nature's really not helping out with this, this time around. It's gonna be cold, it's gonna be hard to get people in there, but our kids are doing a lot of really cool things. So if you see parents out, encourage them to come in and see the, see the teachers, cause I think if you see what Ms. Thompson's wearing right now, our entrepreneurship class was a part of that, Mrs. Sturkle led it. We actually made those shirts in-house, right across the hallway. Our kids did that, they designed them, they printed them, they, they pressed them and did everything. So that was a really cool project that Sturke took on and, and she did it all herself. I, I know she bought a business in it, but our, our kids have learned a lot from that. So hopefully that's something we can continue and we can grow. But that's just some of the fun stuff that we're doing and that we wanna share with our, our community members and our parents.
Yeah, and that just came up as an idea of me looking at Kyle saying, okay, so hundredth day is coming. Do you think that we can get shirts made? And he's like, yeah, I bet entrepreneurship can do it. And so within just a couple of days, we had the, everything put together, so that was pretty cool. And they turned out awesome. So two schools, one book, we finished that. And we did teacher recordings this time. And we did have a board member who was a hit on one of the recordings. Yours had the most views, so nice job.
She wouldn't let me do what I wanted to do. I wanted to make, I'm gonna do some more action, but she told me just to stay quiet.
So we've already purchased another book that will go out in mid-March, I believe. And so that's The World According to Humphrey. And so excited about that one. And then external visit, Kyle already talked a little bit about that. So our leadership team has been meeting twice a month and has really been rocking and rolling. Getting things prepared for our external visit. And we'll continue to work through different things that other teams have compiled and we'll just basically tie it up for the external visit and put a bow on it for them.
At the end, we just put a few ways that we've been reaching out. We write an article each week for the paper between the three administrators. We have a steering committee that we meet with, that's six community members we bring in and that's once a quarter. So once every two or three months, we meet with them. Just to get a little bit of feedback from the community, what are their kids saying when they come home? What are they hearing from other people? What do they have questions about? How can we better inform them to help get information out into the community and things like that? And then we, we each do monthly newsletters that we put onto the webpage. I believe we both do weekly ones too with our staff, so they're able to give us feedback and we're able to better answer questions that way too. And then of course, social media, we try and keep things up to date there and, and push out as much stuff as we can to keep people informed, so. Anything else?
I like using the Twitter meta. Remember Twitter subscriber or whatever, just the school Twitter, though, it's pretty cool. Was it today, you made a hundred phone calls?
Yeah.
To parents?
Yeah.
I thought that was pretty cool.
Yeah, that was, it was a good day.
I'm guessing you didn't get a lot out of stuff.
Actually, it didn't take nearly as long as I thought it was going to.
Really?
So, yeah.
All right, thanks for that report, those reports. Move on to president's report, it's such me. Yeah, I'd just like to thank, or congratulate the bowlers too for their hard work and success at state. And to Leonard too, you know, his first year, never been involved at school in any way other than being a student. Step in and be a, a coach and take three things to state, but it's, it's pretty good, so. Our policy committee met right before this meeting. We're talking about evaluation, superintendent evaluation and how we wanna do all that. Evaluation and contract offering. And we kinda set out with the timeframe that we wanna to look at to get it all done in succession so they don't overlap and we'll get them done before new boards come on at the beginning of the year. And we've got three, we're gonna come up with three different evaluations. One we have, the NASB one, then we have one more. And we're gonna get those out. And we're gonna get those out to the board members next month, so you can take them all home, look at them for a month, and then we'll come back and decide if we wanna change, pick one of those, don't like any of them, wanna look for something else. And then, once we decide what we wanna do with that, then we'll, we'll meet again and try and put something, a finalized deal together on how we wanna do the evaluation and all that, and then we'll bring that to the board to vote on for recommendations or changes. So, so next month, we'll have some information for you on that. I've been noticed, I've come to school Saturday morning, state, or not state, but junior high honor band, dropped my daughter off. And it looks like school's going on around here, I mean, wrestlers are already gone, this is seven, six forty-five in the morning, the wrestlers are already gone, speech is already gone. I mean, there's cars all the way around the school on a Saturday morning, it's unbelievable how many kids we have involved in extracurricular stuff, that's pretty cool. One thing I've been noticed, bringing my daughter in early for weightlifting and stuff, is how many kids that come to school walk down the middle of the street, not in the middle of the street, on the edge. But we have no sidewalks around this school on certain sides of the streets. And they're covered in snow, and the kids are walking in the street, and the street's covered in snow, and they're slick, and the cars, you know, run slick, slick roads. To me, it looks like a bad thing waiting to happen. It's my opinion, it's something I noticed, I don't know, you know, it's probably more a city issue than it is a school issue, but. I don't know if any of you feel the same way, that there's a risk there or not, that we need to look into it, I guess it would be, I think we have a safety committee, if we thought we wanted to do something, but. I don't know if any of you noticed, or whether you have an opinion on it or not, but I just, I just noticed that. You go around the corner and you got a kid right there walking down the street, and he has no sidewalk to walk on, so.
Around our school?
Yeah, if you just go a block west.
Oh.
On the north side.
Yes.
There is no sidewalk, there is on the south side. So, the elementary kids will walk on a sidewalk, but the high school kids won't go across the street to walk on a sidewalk. And it's the same way going east, towards the library, there's no sidewalk.
No, but they have that. They have it marked off or put that's three of that block.
It's under the snow now.
It's under the snow now, yes, you're right.
So, I don't know, it's just something that I, I noticed coming in, and I would have never noticed if I wouldn't have been, been here in the mornings, but. So, if you guys think it's something we need to look at or think about it. So, that's all I have, so move on to superintendent report.
Hey, I was hoping that I would have heard from somebody, and I don't know who it'll be, to let us know that we have enough vaccinations for your school staff. I did, you know, like if Ashley down at the pharmacy, all of a sudden, you know, they give her an allotment, I don't know exactly how it works, whatever, but she, oh, here we got X amount, here you go. Hey, I've got a hundred left, I gotta use them up in forty-eight hours, calls to school, boom. Whether it's gonna happen like that or not, I don't know, but I haven't received any official notification from Health Department or anybody else to give us any indication about when our staff will, will be vaccinated or have them made available to them. And so, that may happen quite quickly. But we know where Phase One be, and that's supposed to be February into March. The way things go, it could be March into April, who knows, or it could be tomorrow. But as soon as that happens, I'll make sure that you're notified, because that'll be kind of a big deal, you know, to get, you know, your teachers vaccinated. I surveyed our teachers, we had over fifty percent that said absolutely, I'll take it. I didn't have a hundred percent respond yea or nay, I only had five say no, I don't want it, and that's fine, I mean, I don't think anybody's talking about mandating vaccinations. So, as soon as I get more information about their clarification from anybody, I'll certainly let you know. February is generally the month where we present a calendar to you, well, so we've been working on one now. Last, I think every year that I've been here, we've approved a calendar in February, and then we've changed it in March or April or May, or maybe multiple months. So, we were gonna present one to you in March, and we'll probably start with the calendar, similar calendar that we have this year. And again, I always start at State Track and, and then count back, I need a hundred and eighty-five teacher contract days. So, I start at State Track and I count back, and then we see what we need for Christmas, and where's that get us started in August? And then, you know, you've, you've got plenty of student hours, if you've got a hundred and eighty-five teacher contract days, you're gonna have plenty of student hours to meet Rule Ten mandates. So, working on that, we've already looked at one closely and we haven't, we'll, we'll think more clearly about it and get something to you. If you have any strong feelings about it, you usually don't change too dramatically, your professional development plans the past few years has certainly benefited us with two, these two administrators in our preparation for our external visit, so that has helped to, certainly, but. I don't expect anything too dramatically different in a, in a calendar. Our, it started to notify folks today that have been selected for our first class for the Hall of Fame. Our selection committee chose three coaches, six athletes, and one performing artist in our first year. And so, most people that know anything about Plainview Public Schools activities over the past twenty, thirty, forty years would be able to pick probably eight of the ten of these folks, quite honestly, they probably could. You know, your Tim McCready types, you know, are gonna be identified as some of the greatest of all time to go through Plainview, so those folks are being notified this week. We're looking to induct them on the first weekend of June, which is our all-class reunion, we thought we maybe kinda put those two together, that was a Wyatt Fromm idea, who's on that committee. That might generate a little more interest for folks maybe to come back to that all-class reunion, plus, they might say, well, shoot, yeah, you know. Because all the folks that come back for that all-class reunion, which is generally your highlighted class, is your fifty-year class, and then there's a, you know, a bunch of others sprinkled around. They will know a lot of these people and will have memories of a lot of these people, and so, that's, that's a perfect time for it. Also thought about, maybe the end of the summer, our forever Pirates golf scramble attracts a lot of alumni as well. Maybe we give them an option, we could have two different inductions, so whatever's convenient for them, because we sure hope they can come back and, and be part of that, but. And two teams, so I might have left that out, so, three coaches, six athletes, one performing artist, and two teams. And so, I'm working with Awards Unlimited out of Lincoln for the plaques, and that'll be, that'll be pretty special. We lost a kitchen staff member who took a more lucrative position, so we're looking to hire right now, Ms. Linda has an interview tomorrow. And so, hopefully, that will work out, but so far, they've had a substitute in that's helped them along the past few days. And that's all I have, there's your enrollment summary. Vacation sick balance. List it for you there, any questions that you have for me?
Next month, we have to get Kelly as a chair.
No, this is much better.
That's what you want?
Yes.
Really?
Because I can't sit long periods of time.
Yes, she usually complains every Tuesday morning after a board meeting about how long she had.
That's why I've got my comfort chair.
You brought a chair?
I sit all day.
So, when you make it public, the Hall of Fame?
Well, those folks are gonna, the letters are gonna go out. I started to call coaches of the, one of the teams. So, I have letters prepared that I will mail out probably tomorrow, so folks will know by the end of the week. So, I may tweet something out, or definitely have it in the paper, I have it in the paper next week, Mrs. Thompson has it in the paper this week. So, next week, I will probably almost certainly have it in the Plainview paper, revealing who those, those inductees will be.
Hey, anything else?
After all, Tim McCready passed away, didn't he?
Correct.
Young.
Actually made a phone call to his twin brother today.
Oh, yeah? Yeah, he died young.
Yeah, about twenty years ago, almost now.
Long time ago, yeah, he was a year older than me.
He was class seventy.